Good morning and welcome to the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Special Committee of the whole council meeting, which I will now call to order. Are there any declarations of interest from members of the committee? Seeing none, I will move along in our agenda to item C. I will now share our land acknowledgement statement. The town of East Gwillingbury recognizes and acknowledges the lands originally used and occupied by the First Peoples of the Williams Treaty's First Nation and other indigenous peoples. And on behalf of council, I thank them for sharing this land. We also acknowledge the Chipewas of Georgina Island First Nation as East Gwillingbury's closest First Nation community, and recognize the unique relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and the waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and we join them in these responsibilities. I am at item D on community announcements. Are there any announcements from committee? Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor. Well, I wanted to give the heads up for all of the excitement that will be taking place on July first on Canada Day. There'll be multiple celebrations throughout East Gwillingbury, starting at eleven AM with Canada Day celebrations at the Sharon Temple Historic Site, and as well as in the evening at six PM at the Mount Albert Lions Hall. And in the fields, there'll be a celebration and fair going on. So we look forward to July first and celebrating Canada Day.
Thank you very much. Other items today? If they come along later on, give me a nudge and we'll move to them as well. Item E, we're now at item F for deputations. We have none today. Item F is presentation, South Lake Foundation to present committee with the mayor's challenge trophy in recognition of Team EG's fundraising efforts in support of Nature's Emporium Run for South Lake two thousand and twenty-five. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Crone, be it resolved that the presentation of the mayor's challenge trophy by the South Lake Foundation in recognition of the team's Team EG's fundraising efforts in support of Nature's Emporium Run for South Lake for two thousand and twenty-five be received? All those in favor? And that's carried. Boy, that feels good, doesn't it? Item G, Development Services with Counsel Roy DiClimenti in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I move into our workshop, can you remind us, or do you know the the final tally of what what we raised? Thirty-eight thousand dollars for our hospital in the space of just a few weeks. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us. Thank you.
Okay, so item G one is a Development Services presentation regarding, it's a report DS two thousand and twenty-five dash fifteen, a zoning bylaw conformity update. May I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Leahy. Mr. Krupnik, would you care to kick kick us off this morning?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. This morning, I have with us two gentlemen with NPG Planning who will be providing us the presentation. This report today is presenting a zoning bylaw conformity update to our town's zoning bylaw in response to new legislation that has been introduced by the province over the last several years, as well as a conformity exercise with our our official plan, adopted in two thousand and twenty-two, and has, which has since been updated further as well. I will give a brief kind of say about that, the OP. The OP is still in a place that it is with the town. We are, we have been directed by the province to update our OP to respond to the provincial planning statement. We are doing so presently and intend to also bring in our complete community secondary plan once it's completed within that OP and deliver it back to the province. So this exercise is a is a response to this, that OP as well. The project has been awarded officially last month, and that's when it commenced, and it will be carried out in four phases. We're presently in the first phase, and that is starting off with our commencement to council here today, as well as following up with our meetings with our, sorry, external, internal agencies and staff, as well as the public next week. With me today is NPG Planning Solutions, who has been awarded that contract, and the two gentlemen with me to provide the presentation and who will be leading this initiative on behalf of NPG Planning are, sorry, Aaron Butler and Jesse Osbitz. And they will be providing council with the presentation this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krupnik. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Jack. Hello, Madam Mayor, members of council, staff, members of the public that are here in attendance today. My name is Aaron Butler. I'm a principal planner and partner at NPG Planning Solutions. To my left is Jesse Osbitz, also a principal planner and partner with the firm. And I'll just say a little bit about NPG Planning Solutions. We're a land use planning firm that specializes in municipal sector work, as well as development sector work. We have offices in Niagara, Toronto, and Hamilton. And as Jack has mentioned, we're here today to speak about the zoning bylaw review, which we're very thankful to be a part of. Next slide, please. So just to start by introducing you to the members of our team that will be working on this project with you. Jesse is the project manager and principal point of contact with your staff. Jeff sees overseeing our team at NPG that's working on the project. I'll be the community engagement and communications lead, managing all of the public facing meetings, and I'll also be on board to provide support to Jesse and the team on any of the bylaw matters. Mary Lou Tanner is NPG's president. Mary Lou is on board and will act as an advisory in quality control capacity on the project. Jesse, myself, and Mary Lou are all members of the Canadian Institute of Planners and registered professional planners in the province. Dr. Rob Fiedler is an intermediate planner with the firm and is our GIS specialist. Rob will be working with your staff to prepare updated mapping for the bylaw, any schedules for the bylaw and for the project, and will be involved in research and analysis on the project as well. Lee Chang Lim, who's also a professional planner and one of our senior planners, will be really leading the preparation of the of the background report, the technical briefs for the project, in addition to the actual amendments to the bylaw. And last but not least, we have Dan Bennekevich, who's a planner with NPG, and will be assisting with the background report, technical briefs, GIS, the amendments, research, assisting with the engagement work as well. So our team does have experience on similar projects. We're currently working on zoning bylaw updates for several municipalities in Lampton County. We're working with Brockville as well as Aurora, and we're doing some work with Georgina too right now with their official plan and zoning bylaw. So as I mentioned earlier, beyond our municipal practice, we do have extensive, extensive practice in the development side of things. So we get to work with zoning bylaws from across the province every day. Next slide, please. So just in terms of today's presentation, what to expect? We will cover the the project scope and the timeline. We'll touch base about the background report and what to expect there. We'll cover the engagement plan for the project, and we'll talk about next steps and some important dates that are that are coming up. So today's presentation is really about introducing council to the work plan for the project, and of course, an initial point of contact in terms of feedback. If there's anything we need to know that you'd like to pass along to us in our preparation for the first stage of our work, including the background report, we'd love to hear that today, too. Next slide, please. So why are we doing this? Firstly, this is a legislative requirement, the zoning bylaw review. Under the Planning Act, your zoning bylaw must be completed and updated within three years of a of an official plan update or a new official plan. As was mentioned, your, and as you know, the official plan was adopted back in two thousand and twenty-two, but is still being worked on in consultation with the province and some of the ongoing changes provincially. So the zoning bylaw firstly will align with the town's official plan. We'll also be reviewing changes to provincial legislation, Bill twenty-three, most recently Bill seventeen, and everything else that's happening provincially in the planning world, including the new provincial planning statement. And of course, your official plan will also be kind of in line with that as well. The zoning bylaw will be looking at that. We'll be considering changes in the region's role in planning in this exercise in terms of how the bylaw is administered. We'll be looking and and talking about updates to mapping that are necessary as a result of any of those changes. And we'll be reviewing some of the, some planning standards and best practices and incorporating those into this exercise. And a lot of that and what we, kind of what we hear on on those items does come from our community consultation as well, including with council, the public stakeholders, staff, of course, who we'll be working with closely. Through all of this, we'll be looking to some of the objectives here, support the housing supply while reducing the need for frequent amendments to the bylaw, while protecting things that community values, which we'll hear from the community about and from council about natural heritage, community character, agriculture, many other things, I'm sure. Next slide, please. So this slide covers the scope of the project and some basic, kind of the the most important deliverables, I'll say, that you'll be seeing on the project. First is the background report, which we'll elaborate on in a couple which we'll elaborate on in a couple of slides. There's a series of touchpoints with the public stakeholder groups and this council, of course, with your staff as well. We'll get into more of that in terms of the engagement plan that we'll be delivering for the project. I've mentioned the background report. Following that are what we call technical briefs. So there'll be a series of technical briefs about each section of your bylaw, where we'll identify specific matters that might need to be updated, revamped, and kind of recommend an approach with each one of those matters within the bylaw, which, within each section of the bylaw. We'll be getting feedback on those items throughout, through this consultation exercise. And lastly, kind of the final deliverable is of course, the bylaw and updated bylaw with updated mapping as, as required. Next slide, please. So high level, the project schedule. The project is structured into four phases running through to late 2026, Q3 2026. Phase one, which we're in, we call Project Startup. It includes developing terms of reference with your staff, developing the engagement plan, assigning roles on the project, and generally laying out the groundwork for the project. We're meeting with you today as part of this phase, and later today, we're meeting with some stakeholders and with staff and technical advisory committee as well. Phase two is the research and analysis phase about the project. We've commenced that and we're kind of starting to get into laying the groundwork for our background report. This also includes technical briefs that I mentioned and preliminary mapping. That's through to the end of this year. Phase three, which we call Build and Engage, is the drafting of the bylaw itself and in-depth consultation about drafts to the bylaw and any changes that are being made to the bylaw. And that's the first two quarters of next year, followed by Phase Four, which is the delivery of a final bylaw, more consultation, of course, statutory open house and statutory public meeting under the Planning Act and presenting that final version to council for approval. And that's expected Q3 2026. Next slide, please. So this touches on the background report itself, which is kind of the next, next step for us here after this initial consultation. And then just so you know, after this, we'll touch a little bit on the community engagement plan. So the background report really sets the foundation for the review. It identifies gaps when compared against the other pieces of legislation and policies that we, that we're reviewing. It's, as I mentioned, provincial policies and legislation, any regional policies that are now with the town, the, the adopted official plan, that ongoing work, any other town planning documents like the Urban Design Manual, the Complete Community Secondary Plan was mentioned, and of course, council's strategic plan. So as part of that background report, the other thing we're doing is looking at trends, basically, trends in applications that we've seen, trends in applications to the council or to the Committee of Adjustment. We'll be reviewing those with staff and we'll be, we're starting to review kind of, call housekeeping, issues with staff and kind of common, maybe interpretation issues with the bylaw that we want to look at, flagging those, those, those types of trends as well. And the, the bylaw really is, the zoning bylaw is a very important document. It really, it implements, it's one of your best implementation tools that implements the policy directions you're setting out, strategic direction, your, your manuals, your secondary plans. It's, you know, your first, where the rubber hits the road with implementing development in the municipality, the zoning bylaw, and then getting into site plan control and other land division controls. So it's really about seeing what, what these documents, where gaps are in the documents that I've mentioned in between the zoning bylaw and bringing the zoning bylaw into align with everything that you've been doing here. It's also really our, our first opportunity to intensely get to know the municipality and the bylaw and to set the, the technical direction for the project. Next slide, please. So going into community engagement, covering what we'll be doing. It's a key part of this process, of course. It's happening throughout the project. We'll have council presentations, open houses, meetings with interested parties. There'll be public feedback opportunities at each phase of the project, followed by engagement summary memos, which will be provided to you so you can understand the kind, type of feedback that we've been getting. We're starting by meeting with you today. As I mentioned, there's two other meetings lined up for us this afternoon. And we have our first open house for the project, which is happening next week, June 25th. That's at the Sports Complex, one from 3:00 to 5:00 and one from 7:00 to 9:00. I think I saw a road sign driving in for the open house, which is great to see. Really nice branding and right out there for the public to, to see. Later this year, as we prepare the background report and the technical briefs, we'll have further touchpoints with the public and stakeholders as well as the, what we call the technical advisory committee and council. So the, just in terms of like the type and what these, what these meetings, what we're trying to get out of them, the public open house sessions are, are broad, open sessions with the public to share information about the project and to receive broad feedback from the public. The stakeholder meetings will include agencies that are involved in development review process. It will also involve developers and builders, people that use the bylaw on a daily basis are invited, and we're looking to hear from them, more targeted feedback during those sessions about how they've been using the bylaw, maybe what they'd like to see, what common issues they might see, what's good about the bylaw, what should be kept. So it's, it's a little more targeted than the open house sessions. The technical advisory committee is made up of staff from the town, from various departments, and they'll be providing very targeted feedback on the bylaw and will provide kind of advice and direction to NPG and the planning department as we work through this together. So we'll be looking from, for feedback from those groups on the contents of the background report, technical briefs, preliminary mapping, and that feedback will be followed by a summary memo, and that's in Q3 and Q4 of 2025. Next year, as the draft zoning bylaw is released, we'll have another series of touchpoints with those groups and with council to get substantial input on the draft, again, followed by a summary memo. And lastly, as the project comes to a close, final drafts are being released. There'll be another open house, the statutory open house that's required under the Act, and the statutory public meeting. There'll again be meetings with the technical advisory committee at that point and stakeholders, anyone else that still would like to meet about the, the final bylaw. In total, we have four public open houses. Council will be seeing us four or five times, I think, and we'll be meeting with the technical advisory committee five times as well, with stakeholders in each phase and with your staff. We have set up bi-weekly meetings with your staff that will be kind of touching base, talking about any issues that have come up, things that we want to, you know, basically making the week-to-week decisions on the project. Next slide, please. So in addition to the open houses, the public meetings, those more formal meetings with staff and with agencies, there's other ways that the public can participate and provide feedback. There's a project website already set up on the, on planning's page under the zoning bylaw. I see some kind of FAQs there now with timelines, links to reports. There'll be links to draft bylaws, links to mapping. And we'll, we'll work with your communications team and your planning team in terms of other ways to get feedback, but we'll certainly include, we've talked about a newsletter, of course, social media channels. We see the road signage and the good old fashioned kind of written submissions to yourselves and to us, or email submissions, of course. Next slide, please. So this just touches on next steps with highlighting a couple of, of those key dates again for you. So we're here today on June 17th, meeting with yourselves. We'll be meeting with the stakeholders this afternoon, technical advisory committee. Next week on June 25th is the public open house, which we hope has a, a great turnout. And we'll be continuing work on the background report throughout this, where we are now, into the technical briefs into the summer and doing some preliminary mapping, followed by engagement sessions on those items later this year as we prepare the first draft version of the zoning bylaw update and mapping. And with that, I'll, we can go to the next slide, which is just a, a thank you, and we'll pause for any questions, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. I'm actually chairing, Madam Mayor.
Yes, you go ahead.
Sorry about that.
Unless you would like to sit the chair back?
No, I'm gonna leave it with you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler and Mr. Ospitz for, for being here this morning. Members of committee, any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Crone, and then I'll have Counselor Leahy. Go ahead, Crone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to our presenters. Thank you very much for coming out today. I, I think I recall the last time we went through this, Madam Chair, you may remember, I think it was in 2017, 2018, we went through this process.
Would you like to see the scars?
Well, that's part of my question. If I recall at the time, one of the, the criticisms of the process we went through last time was the, the lack of engagement or lack of communication to, to get people engaged. So help me, what would be your pitch to the average resident here in East Goulambury? Why should they be concerned about this process? Why, what would make them want to be engaged in this? Because I think if, if you can give the reason why, it's so much easier to engage them, and that could be part of our comms plan. So I throw that question out to you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's a great question. Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. To me, it might be, again, that the, the zoning bylaw is such an important document in terms of the first, kind of where the rubber hits the road in implementing the vision of the council. Yes, the official plan sets out your, your broad, your policy framework, but the zoning bylaw is law, it's legislation that's used on a daily basis to review building permits, other planning applications like severances or minor variances, shed, you know, building a shed, building other things that are common to, to a layman. And so, you know, that might be my pitch, that it's, it's really the, one of the most useful documents, I think, in implementing planning policies that the town has beyond site plan and land division controls. And that's, that's to the layman and of course, to others from the development industry. It's important to them. They're using the bylaw every day in their applications. And on that side of things, too, you know, this is the opportunity for the public to kind of see and set regulations for the development industry and for council to do that, but for the public to be involved.
I think before I open the, the microphone up to Counselor Leahy, for me, we need to be very clear about what this project is. This is not a comprehensive town-wide zoning bylaw update, and that's what we did in 2018. For us, this, we need to be very clear that this is a conformity exercise, that we are bringing our zoning bylaw into conformity and into alignment with the principles of our new official plan. But to Counselor Crone's point, it becomes the question for our residents. It's one thing for us to drive by a sign, and when I say us, I mean residents, but it's another thing for them to say, why should I care? And why should I, why should I take time out of my, my evening on a nice late spring evening to go and talk to somebody about zoning? We talk about this process not being property-specific, but that's often how people engage with the process, is how will this impact me? How will this change my property? And what will, what will this do to my lifestyle, quality of living, plans for my property, hopes and dreams for my financial security because you're now going to zone my property one thing instead of another? So I think that's really important for us to get right. And I think that, to Counselor Crone's point, it needs to, it needs to inform your communication strategy. So I'll just, I'll leave that as more of a, as a comment and some feedback for you and as a way of paraphrasing what Counselor Crone said as well, because he and I often think similarly. Counselor Leahy, please go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. Both yourself and Counselor Crone have stolen my thunder. That was my question exactly. Last week, we had a, a community meeting for secondary planning of our, all of EG except for Mount Albert. And residents turned up who were from Mount Albert and they thought that they were going to be on the map and part of the discussion. They discovered that it wasn't the topic that they thought it was going to be. So if you could clarify that zoning bylaw conformity update, that's the title of it, which is very high level and kind of hard to pin down, as my fellow counselors have spoken to, about exactly how that impacts a, a private property, a resident of, of East Goulambury. Could you give us some specific examples of the sort of typical questions you might get during a zoning bylaw conformity update so that, so that residents know whether or not, they can decide whether or not they want to participate?
So I think you're, you're right. We have to communicate in a way that's clear for the public. So what I would say is, the focus is on, yeah, like, the focus typically is on what can I, what, how does it affect my property? How does it affect what my neighbors could do with their property? And also, I think part of the communication is typically when you go through these reviews, you're not really taking away land rights, right? You're usually adding use, I mean, often you're adding uses and you're being more permissive, for example, being a little bit more permissive with parking because of TOD to accommodate transit-oriented development. But also, when we communicate these things, that like transit-oriented development is probably not a word that I would use with the public, but it's important to be very clear and considerate of plain language types of communication. So when we go through the open house, what we intend to do is prepare presentation boards. And these presentation boards will be very clear. So they will say, they will have reasons for the, the zoning bylaw review as well as how it affects individuals. We're not going to be, I don't think we're going to be at a very high level in saying, I mean, we'll have this, but the, that the zoning bylaw update is intended to conform to the official plan. But I mean, the focus is not going to be on, but then you start to draw a lot of questions, like what is an official plan? So the focus more is going to be on how that affects the individuals.
I think in order to get people into that room, you need to ask those questions ahead of time. So what are the, what are the big issues that you're looking to, that you need to address? So should, here's an example. Should accessory dwelling units be permitted on Oak Ridge's moraine properties or greenbelt properties? That's a question. And that would be something that everybody who has property in the moraine and the greenbelt would show up to answer. So how, you, you have to be almost a little bit more provocative to say, oh, well, we're going to do a zoning bylaw. Well, no one really understands that. But if you start to talk about site-specific issues or things that you've identified that need to be updated, I know staff have a laundry list of things that they've been keeping track as the, when the official plan was approved and things that we needed to tweak or adjust. So those are the sorts of things that you need to ask ahead of time to get people engaged in the process, I think, is what we're trying to say to you is, is it's not enough to have a board when they arrive, but how do you get them in the room? And I think for, for us that were here in 2018, the, the idea that, that people were not having their land rights taken away from them was certainly something that was contested. And especially when it came to environmentally protected lands, the EP lands, and those people who have EP zoning on their properties certainly had some, some choice words for us, including the Conservation Authority. So, you know, from that perspective, I think we need to be very cautious that this is not a comprehensive one, but that also the reality is that a lot of our zoning is site-specific. And so are there site-specific zones that can be brought into conformity within the bylaw as well, rather than simply having an individual spot? Counselor Foster, you wanted to speak. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just to build on what my colleagues have already said, so the last time we went through this was a little bit different exercise, although there were many well-attended meetings and lots of consultation with the public. Some of us still have some of the bruises from those consultations with the public. I would simply ask that both yourselves and our staff really take the time to go back and have a look at what those issues were at that time and how they fit with this exercise. and have a look at what those issues were at that time and how they fit with this exercise that you're doing now, so that we're, you know, I hate to say it, but I think we needed, we maybe weren't as well-prepared as we maybe should have been at the time. There were a lot of people, I'm sure we have a great list of, of residents that were involved that certainly might be coming out again, so I, I'd just like to make sure you're ready and we're ready. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Foster. Councilor Carruthers, please.
Thanks, I don't like to repeat what everyone else has just said, but I think it can't be said enough that we need to find a way to engage the public, and the open houses are great, but we need to bring them in. I get calls from residents when the development's going in, and they say, when was the public meeting on that? Well, it was probably before you even lived here, because it was, was a zoning bylaw or an official plan change that happened, and as long as the development's in conformity, we don't need to have a public meeting. So, residents don't understand that. So, it, we need to find a way to help educate them, so that they're not surprised later. And I think being a bit provocative might get some people coming out, might get some people concerned, but they're going to be concerned later anyway, so they might as well be concerned now, when there's still a chance to do something about it. I also wanted to just ask a question about where we're at with the OP. So, it was adopted in 2022, the region came back a year later with changes, and I don't know what's happened since then, so if we can just get an update, because if this is trying to bring it in conformity with the official plan, official plan hasn't been officially signed off yet, I'm just trying to understand that.
Mr. Krevnik, I know you and I had this conversation.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, thank you for the question, Counselor. Yeah, so, the region did give us a lengthy kind of laundry list of edits and changes to make to our official plan. Those changes have since been, been made, so the document has been updated since it's been last adopted by council. It was headed back to the region mid-last year, when the region lost its planning authorities, and so therefore we, we were going to take it to the province, but the province, in anticipation of the provincial planning statement, had said, hey, hold off, and please do additional work in the provincial planning statement. So, it, the OP is in a very good place, Counselor, but it is, and we still need to be tweaked to address the provincial planning statement, but we will have to bring that document, or we anticipate bringing that document back to council as well, to see it, to see the form that it is in presently, and we could potentially, again, go out and do another kind of open house on any kind of update related to that provincial planning statement.
Okay, so it's been three years since we, we adopted it, but it's still not official. So this is, this planning exercise on updating the zoning bylaw is based on the new plan, which has, doesn't have the final seal of approval from the province. So we're just, just worrying about cart and horse here.
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, Counselor, so, so we are working these processes in, in parallel, so that they're not sequential, I guess, or one after another and taking a little bit longer. So the anticipation is that when this process finishes and gets adopted by council, we may have an adopted official plan by the province, depending on how long the province takes to adopt our official plan. So, we do anticipate providing it to the, to the province at the latest of Q1 2026, and once we get their seal of approval, we will bring this to council for adoption as well.
So we're not expecting any considerable changes from what we have now? I'm just thinking, if there's going to be considerable changes and that throws this whole process, this zoning bylaw process, out of whack. So we're assuming that as it is now is how it will pretty much end up? Is that what we're assuming?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, so, so, and I believe, Counselor, you're talking about the OP, right?
Right, yes.
Yes, the OP, so, we are happy with the, the shape of the OP, you know, the consultant we worked with is happy with the shape of the OP, the region is happy with the shape of the OP, it, and again, technically needs that seal of approval by the province, and we hope that the provincial government will give that in a timely manner to us.
Okay, thank you. So my understanding, just to clarify this, Mr. Krevnik, was you had indicated to me that you were going to bring the OP back to us for readoption in Q1 of 2026, then, and, and because this process would, the zoning bylaw process would also be taking place shortly thereafter in Q3 of 2026, you would bring the zoning bylaw for our adoption as well? So it's being done in tandem, but we would not be approving any zoning bylaw changes until the OP was approved? So we could hold this process in abeyance until the OP was approved by the province?
Through you, Madam Chair, I, I believe so, yes, if I understand your question, yes, we will bring the OP back to council and for readoption, send it straight off to the province from there, and, and come back at a half a year later for the adoption of our zoning bylaw with council as well.
Thank you, and I'll just, as, while we're talking timelines, I'll just highlight that Q3 2026 is prime-time election season, so I'm just, I want you to be mindful of that as well. Any other questions from members of committee? Go ahead, Counselor Johns.
Thanks, Madam Chair. My, my thoughts are actually similar to Counselor Carruthers, but it's in a different area. On page 28 of 109, it, it talks about what the project won't be delivering, so it, the project will not deliver, and this is the only one that jumped out at me of the, of the items that are listed, a townwide parking study, but it will consider changes to parking-related standards. So my question is related to the fact that I, I believe in that kind of Gantt chart of project execution items that we have, it is a municipality that we're working through that is presented quarterly, I believe that there, there was a, a parking-related study that we were looking to undertake, and so, similar to Counselor Carruthers' point about running in parallel with the official plan, I'm looking to get clarity on the timing of the townwide parking study that we were looking to undertake, and then if those changes will be considered within this exercise, and considering changes to parking-related standards as we are going through our process. And I was looking to buy time for the conference happening there, and I will, I will stop now and allow the opportunity for...
Mr. Krevnik, do you want to give us an update on the parking bylaw?
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. So that's, so we have, yes, a parking bylaw which is being presently, just starting that off essentially to review that bylaw as well and provide updates to it. The idea is that it would work in conjunction with our, our zoning bylaw conformity update, so that they can kind of inform one another, and, and we can have that updated, presented to council potentially later this year, the, the parking bylaw update.
Further?
Yeah, thanks, so just in follow-up, so to, to be clear, we will undertake that, and then the results of that, council can decide what to do with that, at their direction, but that timing will still allow for that input to fit into this undertaking.
Through you, Madam Chair, I will.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Anything further? Okay, with that, I'm going to, to thank Mr. Butler and Mr. Osbitz for their, for their presentation this morning. I have a motion from Councilor Leahy that we receive the presentation and report, and that we endorse the bylaw conformity update project terms of reference as outlined in the appendix of the report. All those in favor? And that motion carries, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate the feedback today.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of this portion of our agenda, I'll turn the chair back to you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, we're at item H, Fire and Emergency Services, with Counselor Foster and the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Fire and Emergency Services has a presentation today regarding establishing and regulating bylaws, and it's certainly a pleasure of mine to see my old friend, Mr. Wells, in the, in the crowd here today. It's always good to catch up. Can I have a mover for this presentation? Mr. Crone? And Chief Mainprice, please start us off.
Thank you, Chair Foster. Mayor Haxton and members of committee, thank you for the opportunity to participate in today's meeting and share some important information related to the structure and operation of a municipal fire service. A key requirement to any municipality that operates a fire service is a comprehensive and properly structured establishing and regulating bylaw to ensure a town effectively mitigates the challenges that are identified in our community risk assessment. We've asked the Office of the Ontario Fire Marshal to be here today to assist us with providing this information to the town. Making today's presentation is Assistant Deputy Fire Marshal Keith Wells. Keith's a longtime fire service member, who's worked many years in York Region, including King and Georgina, has been with the Office for about six years, holds many NFPA certifications, and is responsible for the field and advisory services within the Office. We'll have Keith come to the podium at this point and start with his presentation.
Mayor Haxton, Member of Council, Mr. CAO, Chief, members of East Goulambury Fire and Emergency Services, and members of Public Present, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, it's a great honor to be here, to speak to you about establishing and regulating bylaws. As we get into it, the one thing I do just kind of want to touch on, the OFM does not provide legal advice in terms of wording or anything like that in establishing, regulating bylaw, we do leave that to your legal counsel to work through. And finally, one of the things we're really good at in the fire service is acronyms, so I just want to go over a couple of acronyms as we get started. When I talk about ENR bylaw, obviously talking about the establishing and regulating bylaw. And the other one you'll hear me speak about quite a bit is the FPPA, which is the Fire Protection Prevention Act, which regulates fire protection services in the province. And of course, at the, at the end, I have left time for any questions that any of you may have. If I can just change the slide, please? So what is an ENR bylaw and what is the purpose? An establishing and regulating bylaw is a municipal document that outlines how the fire department operates and provides fire protection services. It details the department's responsibilities, policies, procedures, and regulations. This bylaw is crucial for ensuring that the municipality meets the obligations under the FPPA. So it provides clear and accurate policy direction reflecting how council wants their fire department to function and operate. It assists council in understanding and exercising their responsibilities under the FPPA and related regulations. Documents the responsibility and authority of the fire chief and for the types of, and extent of fire protection services necessary to meet the special risks and circumstances within your municipality. And can I change the slide, please? So there are many resources available to help develop your establishing and regulating bylaw that the fire chief will work with. The following documents should be used to inform the content of the bylaw. So, for example, the Fire Protection Prevention Act, which is obviously the, the law regulating it, the Municipal Act, which speaks to different bylaws that can be put in place, Occupational Health and Safety Act, Community Risk Assessment, the Community Master Fire Plan, existing applicable bylaws and agreements, I'm sure you have many of them within that speak to fire issues, and collective agreements. And I'll have the slide changed, please? So, Section 2.1 of the Fire Protection Prevention Act, it talks about what every municipality must do. It talks about establishing a program in the municipality, which must include public education with respect to fire safety and certain components of fire prevention. So there's, there's no way around this, this is a requirement under the Fire Protection Prevention Act, every municipality must have that. And then B speaks to providing such other fire protection services as it determines may be necessary in accordance with its needs and circumstances. In discharging its responsibility under subsection 1, the municipality must appoint a community fire safety officer or community fire safety team, so if you weren't establishing a fire department or don't have a fire department in your municipality, then you have to have a community safety officer in place. So, with that, helping the municipality with the public education role, the Office of the Fire Marshal does have a public education unit which develops materials and resources to assist municipal fire departments in their local public fire safety education efforts to raise public awareness of fire prevention and fire safety and protection in their communities. So, the FPPA, as mentioned, also declares that it is a municipal mandated responsibility to provide fire protection services. So municipalities should determine what various fire protection services are needed in their community, based on the data within their community risk assessment. And now, I'll move on to the next slide, please? So with that, sorry, we should be on the one establishing a fire department? There we go, thank you. If council decides to establish a fire department, which East Goulambury has done in the past, a fire department, this falls under Section 5 of the FPPA. Council may establish, maintain, and operate a fire department for all or part of the municipality. As well, if the fire department has been established, fire suppression services shall be provided and other fire protection services deemed appropriate for the level of service. So again, because you've established a fire department, they're required to provide fire suppression services. And then with that, as council, you determine what other services they would be providing within fire protection services. Included as appendices to the ENR bylaw should be clear in mapping of the municipality, ensuring there are clear boundaries to distances and services to provide, and where other agencies may have responsibility and authority. An example of this would be MNR. And change slide, please? So transparency within establishing and regulating bylaw is crucial for fire departments for several reasons. It clarifies the scope of services provided, provided and funded, maintains community trust, and protects the municipality from potential liability. The bylaw defines the level of fire protection services the municipality will provide. Transparency also fosters public confidence in the fire department's operations and commitment to safety, while adherence to the bylaw helps the municipality manage potential liability. By identifying the fire department's operational capabilities, it provides members of the public with a transparent snapshot of the council-approved services they can expect from the fire department. Next slide, please? If a fire department is established for the municipality, council shall appoint a fire chief for the department. A fire chief is the person who is ultimately responsible for council for the delivery of fire protection services. The fire chief may exercise all powers assigned to them under the FPPA. The appointment of a fire chief should be included in the ENR bylaw, as it ensures clarity in what a full area of that the fire chief is responsible for, and include limitations of service upfront. Now let's get into the role of fire chief, if I could have the slide changed, please? So the fire chief is appointed under bylaw pursuant to Section 227 of the Municipal Act. The role of the chief is to implement council's business plan related to the delivery of fire protection services that council has determined to provide to the local community. By leading and managing the fire department, implementing fire department services as approved by council, example, running local public fire safety education and fire prevention programs, providing fire suppression services such as firefighting, the administration of bylaws, guidelines, and policies, providing relevant and timely information to council related to public safety and fire protection services. Fire chiefs are ultimately responsible to their council for the delivery of fire protection services, as per the Fire Protection Prevention Act, Section 6.3. Fire chiefs by virtue of their position are assistants to the fire marshals, inspectors, and chief fire officials. Fire chiefs may exercise all powers assigned to them under the Act. Fire chiefs may delegate their powers assigned under the Act, under Sections 14, 19, and 20, subject to limitations as may be described. subject to limitations as may be described. Recognizing that there are different municipal and community reporting structures, CAO, fire boards, LSBs, a municipality may choose to have the fire chief report through an administrative organizational structure. However, the fire chief remains accountable directly and individually to council for all aspects of fire safety and the delivery of fire protection services within the municipality. Next slide, please. Under 6.6 of the FPPA, the fire chief may delegate their powers under Section 14, 19, 20, and other powers and duties as may be prescribed to any firefighter. Fire chiefs are encouraged to formally delegate authorities to other fire service members in writing and may impose any limitations to those powers as they deem appropriate. Example, the fire chief may give fire department staff member authority to approve fire safety plans, but not fire safety plans in vulnerable occupancies. Or, fire chief may give authority to conduct investigations, but not to approve anything in the fire code. So they can be very specific in terms of what those delegations look like. Section 14, commonly associated with investigations, a fire chief may deem it appropriate to specify the specific investigators based on their training, knowledge, and experience, the scope of their investigation. This will determine what job functions investigators may or may not conduct during an investigation. The fire chief may further limit the scope of investigation they authorize their staff to conduct based on resources available to them at the time of the investigation. Section 19 is related to conducting fire safety inspections. Fire chief may deem it appropriate to identify specific inspectors based on their training, knowledge, and experience as to the scope of their inspections. This will determine what job functions inspectors may or may not conduct during an inspection. Example, a new inspector that has not inspected a vulnerable occupancy previously will be shadowed by an experienced inspector for a period of time before conducting their own vulnerable occupancy inspections. Next slide, please. So, we talk about fire protection services. So as previously mentioned, the reference to fire protection services is quite expansive. The FPPA provides a definition in Part 1. So it includes fire suppression, fire prevention, and fire safety education. It talks about the mitigation and prevention of risk created by the presence of unsafe levels of carbon monoxide, rescue and emergency services such as vehicle extrication, communication in respect of anything described in Clause A to C, also the training of persons involved in providing anything described in clauses A to D, and the delivery of services described in Clause A to E. So really, it's a very broad, open thing so that as council determines what kind of services they're looking at, they can hone in more on what those services look like. Some additional considerations, talks about increased levels of public education and fire safety standards and enforcement beyond minimum service requirements. So please know that as we talk about the act or any regulation, that is the bare minimum that must be met. There's nothing stopping a municipality from going above and beyond. Training levels, so NFPA standards, certification levels, of course, July 1, 2026 being a very important date with certification coming into force. Ministry of Labor, providing firefighter guidance notes under Section 21, ensuring the health and safety of firefighters, informing residents of the level of fire protection services, whether they're increasing or decreasing or remaining the same. Next slide, please. So as I go through the next few slides, we'll go over some key items, sections, and considerations to include in your E and R bylaw. I do want to note again that when developing an E and R bylaw and updating an existing one, you should seek legal and work with your legal department. I am providing consideration recommendations, but the OFM does not provide legal advice. Services and functions, so levels of service to be provided within the municipality that have been determined through your CRA, Community Risk Assessment. Are you providing interior attack, exterior attack, water and/or ice rescue, hazmat, inspections, investigations, et cetera? And at what level are you providing these services? Because certainly water rescue, ice rescue, different things like that, all come with different levels of service provided. Goals and objectives of the department. So you want to talk about the general responsibilities of members, methods of appointment within the department. In the event of the fire chief's absence, it should be considered to include a provision within the E and R bylaw permitting council to appoint a person to act on the behalf of and whom the fire chief may delegate his or her powers or duties to. We've seen this before where a fire chief has become ill, suddenly ill, unable to do their job, and we found that some councils scrambled to try and get that next person in place. So having that plan in place. Authority to proceed beyond establishing response areas, so entering into fire protection agreements, mutual aid agreements, that sort of thing. Authority to affect necessary department operations such as agreements for training to meet legislative requirements. Authority to enter into agreements for automatic aid, communications, technical responses. For example, if you don't do trench rescue, which is a very technical-based rescue, is there a nearby municipality that you can purchase those services through? And then, of course, having a report back to council of the fire department activities in an annual report. Next slide, please. Key sections to include in your E and R bylaw include definitions, so approved organizational chart by position and map of coverage areas included in the appendices, defining the structure of the fire department, the hierarchy roles, operating policies, operating guidelines, rules, and regulations. E and R bylaws are typically supported by policies and operation guidelines which provide further direction to staff on the operation of the fire department such as training policy, fire prevention policy, operation guidelines related to suppression services activities. Next slide, please. It should also have references to legislative requirements that may impact the delivery of fire protection services. For example, we've talked about the FPPA, the Occupational Health and Safety Act, Municipal Act, Fire Marshal's directives to the assistance to the fire marshal, standards and best practices. So for example, Section 21 Committee being the best practice for health and safety guidelines. There's lots that can be included in the E and R bylaw. Next slide, please. Want to talk about a community risk assessment. So Ontario Regulation 378-18 required all municipalities by July 1, 2024 to have a community risk assessment in place. A community risk assessment provides for informed decisions to be made about the types and levels of fire protection services based on your identified risks. Municipalities, again, were required by July 1, 2024. The OFM developed a guideline that consists of nine profiles that assess community fire risks by examining and analyzing relevant community data and factors of and applying the information to potential fire risks. It helps the municipality complete an analysis on the likelihood of scenarios occurring and the consequences if it were to occur. It formulates and prioritizes fire risk management decisions and helps reduce the likelihood of identified potential fire scenarios from happening and mitigating the impact. So just some of them to go through, geographic profile, building stock profile, it talks about the critical infrastructure profile, demographic profile, hazard profile, public safety response profile, community services profile. Most of them are self-explanatory. The one I do like to explain is the economic profile. This isn't talking about, as a municipality, can I afford to provide that service? That's not what it's talking about in here as you're looking at your risks. You would take, for example, a very, an employer that hires a lot of your members or residents, and what would happen if something catastrophic happened in that building? So all of a sudden, that manufacturer can't pay municipal taxes. Perhaps you have 500 residents within your community that work there, now all of a sudden they're struggling to pay the taxes. And that's what it means by economic factors. And then, of course, past loss and event history profile. This is very telling because you get to see what your trends are within your municipality. This is a very large, growing municipality, so do those trends change from year to year based on the influx of new people and new businesses within your community? And of course, the worksheets for these are provided on our website and, of course, through our advisors as well. The next slide, please. Mandatory certification, so municipalities and fire departments must ensure that their firefighters are certified to perform specific fire protection services. Firefighters must be certified to the standards set out in the regulation. So certification can be provided by the fire marshal or through accredited from the International Fire Safety Accreditation Congress, so IFSA, or a pro-board seal recognized by the fire marshal. There are several exceptions to the certification requirements such as for firefighters with less than 36 months of service who are supervised by certified firefighters or those temporarily assigned to different services. I do want to note that after a firefighter receives their training and certification, it's to the minimum level. So it qualifies you on how to use basic equipment, use PPE properly, but the continued training will teach firefighter strategies and tactics and the actual operation, boots on the ground. This does not take, this does take time and is consistent, constant training. So just because someone is certified does not mean they're good at what they do. Next slide, please. So in summary, municipal fire departments should consider the following recommendations to ensure the effective and efficient provisions of fire protection services within their community. Review your community risk assessment on an annual basis and complete a new risk assessment every five years. That's the legislative requirement, and it's just best practice in terms of knowing what the risks are in your community. Develop policies and operating guidelines for fire department activities, including all applicable core services provided by your municipality, keeping them updated. Using your risk assessment, you know, update your establishing and regulating bylaw. Ensure the fire department personnel are trained and competent and maintained as per OREG 34322. Well, we just spoke from the previous slide, once certified, need to ensure that you maintain consistent and constant training. Develop pre-incident plans for high and extreme-risk occupancies, any building or location where there is possibility of a firefighter injury occurring. This is where you would want to pre-plan. Next slide, please. Some of the common recommendations, so ensure consistent application of enforcement options under the Fire Protection Prevention Act and Provincial Offenses Act. Our regulatory compliance unit within Field and Advisory Services provides seminars on inspections and enforcement. Develop appropriate public education programs with respect to fire safety and certain components of fire prevention as identified through your community risk assessment. And as previously mentioned, our public education team are happy to help with this piece. Ensure compliance with the requirements for vulnerable occupancies as outlined in legislation, regulations, and fire marshal directives. Ensure the appropriate designation and delegation of authority is in place to support the effective delivery of approved fire protection services. And next slide. And thank you very much for letting me be here today. And through the chair, I am able to take questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Lots of information there that will certainly come into play as we move through the establishing and regulating bylaw process that we're working on now. Are there any questions from members of committee? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. My question is with regard to, you started off the presentation by asking, what are special risks or unique risks to any municipality? And so what would you identify as unique and specific risks to East Kilimbury? And in my mind, the first thing that comes to mind are the train tracks and the train crossings in our town. And we've often had conversations about the horns on those trains. But under community assessment risks, you also had an icon for hazardous risks. So would you mind speaking a little bit more to the unique, specific risks of East Kilimbury?
Of course, and through you, Mr. Chair. So some of the unique risks, again, as you mentioned, you have a highway going through. Is there a lot of hazardous material going through there? Are the train tracks, are there a lot of hazardous material going through? You look at some of your manufacturing facilities coming in. Again, is it very chemical-based on what they're doing? Is it just warehousing? So do you need to look at different teams? Like, do you need to get to the hazmat tech level and that sort of thing? Some of the other things too, some of the roadways and that sort of thing, what, how many motor vehicle collisions do you end up with? So is that a, is that a service you need to provide? I think in most municipalities in this day and age, it is, but just hypothetically, that would be something you may look at. Some of those risks too may not be your standard ones. Our weather patterns are changing, and you know, we end up with more tornadoes and that sort of thing. So what does that response look like? What special responses look like? I know our guideline talks about a lot of those things, and it guides the fire service in that. And, you know, we have our advisory services here to help. I think the number one advisor that a municipality has is set out in Section 6.3 of the FPPA is your fire chief. Your fire chief has gone through the risk assessment. Your fire chief understands the risks in your community and can speak to, as they say, special needs and circumstances within your community. So as an outsider looking in, it's not as easy for me as it would be for Chief Main Price to say to you, here are our risks. This is what we've looked at. This is what we've identified. And, you know, here are some strategies to mitigate those risks.
Any further questions from committee? Counselor Johns?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. That was very informative to me. I really appreciated your session. And I was hoping I could get a reminder, because I'm blanking with the reports that we have been seeing over the last couple of years. When was the last community risk assessment taken and delivered before us?
Chief?
Through the chair to the counselor. I believe it was February or March of 2024 the risk assessment was delivered and approved by council.
I think I had Counselor Crone next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to note that you said off the, in your opening remarks, that our presenter here today was a friend. And so right off the top, I know that you're a man of great charity and patience. So...
That's what these medals are, sir.
This is the only chance I get to poke fun at Counselor Foster. He's twice my size, bust me in half. Community risk assessment seems to be what's on our minds here. I'm a former insurance guy, and so this has special meaning to me as well. So from your vantage point, you get to see what goes on in far more municipalities than we do. we do. Is there, from your experience, is there a common blind spot or failing that you have seen in your, in your experience throughout the other municipalities? What I'm saying is, I don't want to repeat any of the mistakes that others are making. What advice and guidance would you give us?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I would suggest probably the most common one, so either they don't have an establishing regulating bylaw in place, and there are a number of municipalities that do have that or they're very outdated. The other one, I think a lot of municipalities think there is some litigation protection from being vague. And, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I would argue the point in that I think it's important that you are very specific in terms of what services you are and are not providing. I would suggest the expectation of the citizens in your community, when they call the fire department for whatever emergency they're having on their very bad day, your firefighters are trained to deal with that as if they trained the day before. While they have to be aware that there are some services that perhaps you don't provide, it will take some time to get in those resources, perhaps from another municipality, to take care of and mitigate that situation. So, again, I think my best advice would be very specific in terms of what you do and do not provide. We live in a very litigious society. I think that's fair to say. And I have seen where a specific bylaw has protected that municipality. And if I may just give a very brief kind of overview of that, I'm sure we all saw on the news, and I won't mention the municipality, but where a dog fell through the ice, there was, there was a fire chief that arrived on scene, would not let his firefighters go out into the water because they were not trained to that level. It was not in their establishing and regulating bylaws. And then the owner of the dog wanted to go out and rescue the dog in a very unsafe condition. And the fire department were aware that they would not be able to facilitate a rescue if something happened to that person. So there was no action taken apart from trying to do stuff from the shore that they could, which their establishing regulating bylaw spoke to. You know, someone, I guarantee, will probably try and take legal action against that, but their establishing and regulating bylaw, hats off to them, was specific to not providing that level of service. And I would suggest that is a good, a good hook to put your hat on.
Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I spent some time trying to figure out, well, I knew that we had one, and I had, over the years, we've talked about updating it. And so, from what I can tell, it's from, it's from June of 2011. So it's certainly, while we have one, it's woefully out of date. For me, I looked at a lot of the material that you presented, and you said that, you know, there was a lot of provincially mandated things. And then I looked at things that are, you know, part of our collective agreement and our HR policies. What are we actually in charge of? What are the issues that we can, that we should be considering to put into our E and R bylaw?
So, again, I think, you know, Chief Main Price has a full understanding of what your risks are in this community. It is about making evidence-based decisions, and I know that is the job of council. It's to look at the risk in your community and make evidence-based decisions in terms of how you're going to mitigate those situations. Again, I think your best advisor on that is Chief Main Price, who understands those risks, can articulate those risks to you. And, you know, as a council, you come up with the plan of what you want him to do, and Chief Main Price is the one who makes that happen through his organization, so.
Any further questions? Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. So at one point, you mentioned about meeting the bare minimum, and I think all of my colleagues would agree that we, obviously, safety is our priority and that we want to do more than the bare minimum in providing excellent service to all of our residents equally throughout East Golem Berry. And so my question is with regard to the expectations of residents in their community. And I know that perhaps this is leading to further conversations with Chief Main Price, but members of the community in Mount Albert make the assumption erroneously that there is, that the fire station in Mount Albert is fully staffed. So in terms of dealing with expectations and that, I think we could have some more work to do with educating the public and potentially improving, improving that situation. But my question is with regard to the collective agreement. And I know that you can't go into details. Our general manager, Mita Gandhi, as far as my understanding is concerned, is that you're in progress of working on a collective agreement. But my question for you is, through you, Mr. Chair, is how the collective agreement in East Golem Berry with our firefighter union, how that works with the community risk assessments and other aspects of the, of the updating of this policy?
Absolutely. Through you, Mr. Chair. And again, we will not step into collective agreements. Again, that's kind of a legal aspect. In terms of, in general terms, you know, the services being provided by a fire service, being led by the fire chief, there's obviously discussions that happen between, and training that happens with the chief and the team. And I think at that level, that's where that all takes place.
Thank you very much for that clarification, and I appreciate that because I think there is potential work that could be done in having conversations with the fire chief in the future with regard to training, et cetera. So, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Counselor Johns?
Thanks, Counselor Foster. It's actually just through you, and I think it might go to the fire chief, and it pertains to, like, as we're moving through and updating the establishing and regulating bylaw, and the comment regarding the community risk assessment that was presented to council in February of 2024, and I'm assuming that the months leading up to it, I don't know how long the process was, can't remember that process, that's why I asked the question. Ultimately, the chief is the one that helps determine that risk, but did the community assessment, if it was presented in February of 2024, did it take, did it, do you recall that it took in to account the new Lob-Laws warehousing? Did it take into account the new retirement home and the amount of stories? And I'm seeing nods.
Chief? Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Johns. So the community risk assessment was current at the time of that it was produced, but it also had a number of sections in it related to future building. A number of these buildings were in progress. Site plans have been approved. Some were under construction, some were not. And it talks about matching risks to the building stock within the community current and in the future, knowing what was coming. So it does comprehend, the risk assessment does comprehend some of those buildings and as well as some of the current construction that's taking place across the town.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we will call the vote to receive the presentation. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you again, Mr. Wells. One thing I think that might be worth saying here, and sometimes if you're not involved with emergency services, you kind of lose this. These exercises are often very difficult, and the part that's most difficult about it is, you look at levels of service. Chief and I and all his staff and the OFM, you could all sit down and talk about levels of service, and eventually, the comment will come up, what's the chances of that happening? And while the chances may be low, you can almost bet your boots the next day is when something ridiculous happens. So setting levels of service is very, very difficult. It's a hard exercise. Anything further, Chief Main Price?
Through the chair. Thank you, Assistant W. Wells, for the presentation. Just one other additional thing. So two Fridays ago, yourself and our mayor had the opportunity to participate in our Junior Firefighter for the Day event held this year in Central York. So I'm saddened to say that we didn't win the Bucket Brigade this year, despite the tremendous effort of Mayor Haxton. We came in second, which I thought was pretty good. She could be on my Bucket Brigade team any day. But the six young members of our community were excellent representatives of the community. They worked extremely, they learned a ton about fire safety. They worked very hard to bring the trophy home for us. We'll, we're going to bring in, so we're going to train some athletes next year and probably spend three or four months prior to the event to get, to get fully ready for it. I think I might have been the downfall of the team. I wasn't, I wasn't quite fast enough passing the bucket along, but it was great to have Mayor Haxton and yourself, Counselor Foster, attend the event. But the big winners were the six junior members of our community who learned about fire safety and represented our community. So thank you to them and to yourselves for participating.
It was a great day, and I will say that I remember in the past, Chief Wall from King, who Mr. Wells knows well, he was like a drill sergeant, getting his group of kids working. So that's what you got to work forward to.
I think King won it again this year. Yeah, I think they train year-round.
They do. It was a very good day to go to, and I always get a kick out of going to those events because I get to see chiefs and deputies in their nice white clothes get wet. The buckets get flying around, and quite often, people end up wet. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We are at Item I in Corporate Services with Counselor Carruthers, the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items under Corporate Services on this agenda. The first one is the Service Experience Strategy, and I'm going to turn it over to General Manager Gandhi to introduce this topic.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. We have two items before us today at CWC. Both reflect the work we've been doing to advance our organization and guide the work that we do. The first is the Service Experience Strategy. This is a deliverable under the Strategic Plan's Priority of a Culture of Municipal Excellence. Under this priority, key deliverable is to develop and implement a customer service excellence strategy featuring a No Wrong Door approach. Bethany Lee, Director of Customer Service and Communications, will be presenting that strategy. And I'll just quickly introduce the second item so that I don't take up time in between. And the second item is the IT strategy, which is also connected to the Priority of Culture of Municipal Excellence and Quality Programs and Services. And Rob Halco, Director of Information Technology, will be presenting the IT strategy. I want to set out, though, before the presentations, that both documents provide a roadmap, a roadmap for how we will focus on service delivery, identify and align resources, prioritize initiatives, and measure our efforts. Both documents serve as a starting point for the work ahead and for action plans that will be reflected in the business plan and budget that will come before council later this year. We'll start with the Service Experience Strategy and Director Lee.
Great. Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. Good morning. As General Manager Gandhi shared, my name is Bethany Lee. I'm the Director of Customer Service and Communication here for EG, and it's my pleasure to share an overview presentation this morning of our proposed Service Experience Strategy. Next slide, please. The Service Experience Strategy aligns to the council-approved strategic plan. Specifically, we're looking at building on the goal of building a culture of municipal excellence. And further, when we dig into the details, we note that we're working towards fostering a culture of service excellence, engagement, and transparency. And the key deliverable outlined in the plan is developing and implementing a customer service excellence strategy, and that brings me before you today. And General Manager Gandhi also mentioned that you'll hear from Rob Halco, our Director of IT, and we've been working very closely together just to share, and taking an agile approach and aligning our work to find congruence between the strategies. Next slide, please. So what problem are we trying to solve? It's a good question and one that some have asked me in conversations leading to today and that many municipalities grapple with, because we know that diligently, we're working to provide good customer service frontline every day, day in and day out, and often, as we just heard from fire services, around the clock. And so why should a service experience strategy matter for council or residents or staff? Or what's in it for me? Just to step away from the slide for just a moment, it's really about how do we continue to deliver on our day-to-day and make improvements, make continuous improvements? You know how you feel when you walk into your favorite home improvement store, when you walk into a cellular provider, or when you take a call from your bank? And we know that when those interactions take place, it's about how you feel. It's about that moment in time, but then it's also about the follow-up. If you weren't satisfied, did you have a route to share your feedback? Was that feedback taken into account? Did you know how to provide input? EG wants to take, we want to take those next steps. We want to ensure that we're minding this part of our business while we continue with that great day-to-day customer service. And the strategy will be actioned through 10 key deliverables, which are outlined in your report and in the appendix document, and I'll talk a little bit more about those shortly. And it will, this work will include, you'll see policy development, communications planning. We'll look at a SWOT analysis, or what are our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, performance metrics, tech enhancements, and again, ensuring a holistic and approachable, accountable implementation. So back to the slides. So this strategy development guides our service experience work. It meets our high-level aspirational goals. An action plan with 10 key deliverables is proposed to meet the goals of the strategy. And I'll give you an example, an engagement strategy. So many have asked, since my time here, how do we know if we're doing a good job with engagement? And what is our engagement strategy? And there are experts out there, for instance, the IAPT2 framework, which we might like to adopt. This is the International Association of Public Participation. And so is that a framework that we can investigate, adopt, and put a plan into place to bring to life in EG? So I've outlined that there on the slide, but there are many different plans that will come from this strategy as part of the action plan. You also notice policy and process development. They're important parts of the strategy, training and development for staff. We take on training right now, but let's look at it holistically, and let's bring a lens of service excellence to that, to that training. We're proposing a working group of staff to come together, most likely quarterly, to talk about the pieces of the strategy and how we can move them forward. Let's talk about metrics. Let's talk about our service level agreements and the pieces that we need to support this work. So again, I'll refer to the IT work. There are many pieces there. But again, leaning on one another and having a working group and having some format around this will really help us move forward. There are many opportunities, and I think we would often call this continuous improvement, or we might call it modernization. And through the action plan, we're making a path forward. So, next slide, please. So here's our path forward. This is, you know, maybe you might call it a roadmap or a phased approach, and I'll just note that we're sort of in that Phase 1 right now and before you. Phase 2 would take us into further action planning. Phase 3 will take us really into that resourcing and implementation. And then ongoing, we don't, we hope that this can stay alive and that we can consider it a continuous improvement framework for our work moving forward. Next slide, please. So our vision is very simple. We tried to pare it down as simple as possible, and that is that EG, East Golem Berry, is committed to delivering an outstanding service experience for everyone. Next slide, please. The following guiding principles will shape the development and execution of the strategy and how services delivered in EG. Developing the principles helps guide our work forward when faced with either ambiguity or decision points. So we can always go back to these guiding principles if we have questions about the work we're doing or how we're doing it. So we want it to be experience-centric. EG's goal can be to create a service experience that's positive, meaning, meaningful, and efficient for all. All can be defined very broadly to ensure that the experience is consistently at the center of the strategy and the action planning. This experience can be at the heart of all of our operations and our decisions. Every action, policy, and interaction reflects our commitment to providing this excellent service experience. Dignity and respect. Every individual be treated with dignity and respect in all interactions. This ensures that including all communication policies, procedures, reflect fairness, empathy, and inclusivity. You will recall when I brought forward the translation policy quite recently, it's that type of work where we can ensure that everybody's included and they feel included in our work, and they're treated with dignity and respect. Accessible and seamless service. Services will be designed to meet people where they are, providing multiple access points. are, providing multiple access points and communication channels to ensure that everyone can easily access the services they need, whether digitally, by phone, in person. Everyone should have experienced a consistent and effortless service journey. So, some journey mapping, talking to the community, how do you want to receive our, our services? That falls into this area. And then continuous improvement through engagement. We're committed to this continuous improvement and regularly want to evaluate our performance and adjust based on feedback, data, best practices. You know, things are changing all of the time, so we'll look at emerging best practices. We really want to also ask, how did we do today? So, this should become an established norm across all of our service touchpoints. And where possible, let's co-design together with the community and ask them, how are we doing and how can we improve? Next slide, please. Thank you. For the themes, so our, our action plan comes from themes, as you'll see on the screen and in the report. I'll just touch on them briefly, just to keep to time and hopefully engage with you with any questions you might have. Four themes are sort of interconnected. The people really focuses on our staff training, engagement, resourcing, and service accountability. As I mentioned, we'd like to form a service experience working group and develop a training plan with the people and belonging team. Technology and data, this is really important as we do map out our future and what that looks like. And so, there will be some digital service development. We'll respect, of course, cybersecurity, privacy, and the use of town data. And we want to build on the growth of our customer relationship management software and the use of it, and how we can report better and use that data better. Connections really is about providing transparent communication through open service level agreements. This is, this will keep customers and staff involved in our service improvements. And then again, accessibility and inclusivity, ensuring equitable access across all demographics and abilities. Next slide, please. So, our top 10 to wrap into sort of an action plan and how we move forward. You'll see them listed there on the screen and in the report. This helps us start to formalize, formalize this work and help us achieve our goals. This is the meat of the work. This is, starts to be, how will we do this work? And how do we bring it to life? So, by following these outlined steps, we will get there. I'll pause for a moment and just to draw your attention to, again, the working group, service level agreements, an overarching communication strategy, an engagement strategy. And not to cover these off specifically, but within the appendix, there, there are more specifics, and we'll build that action plan according to that roadmap. And next slide, please. Thank you. So, really, just to wrap up, thank you to the team that has supported the drafting of this strategy. Thank you to members of senior management and to council where you've been able to provide your early input. And I'll just share also, many staff have contributed, so very thankful for their thoughts and their guidance and their good work that they do every day. This work has been reviewed by the Chair of the Municipal Service Delivery Officials, one of our friendly colleagues. The Chair of MSDO, Michelle Orth, has taken a look and provided some early feedback. So, we do appreciate her support. And I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Director Lee. This is a lot of work that's gone into this and a lot of people who have involved. And I just want to thank your team for all that hard work. And I like how it's laid out with the vision, the key deliverables, the roadmap, the guiding principles broken down into themes, and then the, the next steps. I will save my questions until we just put this on the table. There's two motions, or two-part motion, that this is received and that council adopts. And I have someone to move those two recommendations, Councilor Leahy. I will open it up to questions. Councilor Leahy.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. My question, well, first thing I wanted to say was I, I appreciate the colorful presentation. The very first page that you showed, I immediately brought to mind Van Gogh's Starry Night painting with all of the colorful balloons. It reminded me of that. But that's just an aside as, as an art appraiser. So, my question is with regard to, you listed out an action plan and the process of formalization. And then after that, there's a process for service level agreements, SLAs. Would you elaborate, please, on these service level agreements? And are they a signed contract? Who are they with? Are they between employees and, and outside organizations? Or who, who are these agreements with in terms of service level agreements? Thank you.
Through the Chair. Thank you, Councilor Leahy, for your question. I think it's a great one. I think SLAs, Service Level Agreements, are both internal and external. Internally, we have services, service levels that we need to meet in order to serve the residents. And so, where they're not clearly defined, we can, you know, it's a very busy municipality. We work very, in an agile manner, but we need to understand our internal processes. So, internal service level agreements are very important where they're not set and when they need to be reviewed. From time to time, we might see peaks of, you know, work and activity, and that may be sustained over a short period of time or a longer period of time where perhaps we need to review the service level agreement to meet the internal deadlines or time to respond and so on. But of course, that is a promise, I think, a promise of service delivery to the community. So, that's where it becomes external. So, what can you expect from us? And let's tell the community. You can expect to hear from us within 24 hours, 48 hours. It depends on the type of service, but I think that that's both. You also mentioned partners, and I think that that's really important as well. Can we examine with our partners, how do we respond? How quickly can we be in touch about an issue that's intergovernmental or with another area of business? And how do we expect them to be in touch with us when we're needed? Those are really important. We had some traffic impacts in the last little, little bit that I'm sure we're all aware of with the closure. And how, how did we interact with those partners at another level of government was really important. And I think ultimately, hopefully, it was a responsive process, but we did learn from that. And so, I think that's a great example. I'm glad that you asked about partners and service level agreements there. I hope that helps. That's the way I view it. I would defer also to General Manager Gandhi if she has extra thoughts on that.
I'll just add, thank you, Director Lee. When we established our customer relationship management software, one of the key principles of that was to actually determine levels of service. So, once we take a call, what is the time period specifically in which we need to establish the response for that, for the, for that call or that service inquiry? And so, what, part of our responsibility is to do an annual review of that service level, and, and the system that we have will tell us if we're meeting those service targets or not. And so, part of that is reporting on the service levels that we meet, and then meeting with the departments to understand why or how we're, in, in what cases, we may not be actually reaching those targets, and do they need to be adjusted and for what reason. So, I'll just add that there's a significant technological component that is attached to that on the internal side of the service level agreements.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. One follow-up question. So, is there a physical document that is, that it's in writing formally that is signed or acknowledged in some way by various partners or internally? Is it, is it an actual document, this agreement that's signed?
So, through you, Madam Chair. To Councilor Leahy, my understanding is yes, they are. I would say my experience might be they could be consolidated or centralized so that we have that holistic view. And we do, as Manager, General Manager Gandhi shared, have those reporting structures through their customer relationship management software.
Thank you. Councilor Roy DeClemente.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just had a presentation from the Fire Department that talked about levels of, determining levels of service and specificity. And I don't, I don't see a lot of specificity here in this agree, in this strategy. I think service level agreements internally makes sense. A commitment to our internal customers makes sense. I don't see how you create a service level agreement with your external stakeholders, i.e. your cust, i.e. our residents. And that's who our, who we want to have a really excellent service for. For me, a strategy outlines our current issues, tells us where we want to be specifically, and lays, lays out how we want to get there. And unfortunately for me, this, this strategy, three of the top 10 items are to create three more strategies. And I, I'm fine to receive this presentation, but I'm not interested in adopting it. Thank you.
Anyone else's comments? Councilor Crone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank staffer and Bethany for your presentation and the work that's gone into this. I, I understand that it's, we're at the, we're, you know, this is early days and that it's going to be fleshed out as we go along. You, you said a few things that were music to my ears. Performance metrics is, is so critical. And I think we need to make sure that anything that we do, and I, and I, I want to state that I, I appreciate, since I, I was first elected in 2018, I've seen a market improvement and willingness to move to a, a service-oriented culture here. And I know culture change takes time. And, but I think we're going in the right direction. And you'll never be done. That's just a fact of life, no matter what organization you're in, whether it's government or the private sector. But that suggestion I would give to you is when doing this, make sure that, that, you know, the, the, the culture, the idea of service performance is aligned throughout the organization, and so that everyone has a role to play in it. There's a, if you'll indulge me, there's an old story, and I don't know if it's true, but it sounds really good. Back in the early days of the space program, and President John F. Kennedy was taking a tour of, of the, of the Space Center there, where they were going to launch rockets, before it was named Kennedy Space Center, obviously. And he, he stops to talk to a, a guy sweeping the floor. And he goes, oh, what, you know, what do you do around here? And he said to the President, very forthrightly, "I'm helping to put a man on the moon." So, no matter what the role is that you do, and this is the point, the role, no matter what the role you do in the organization is, you're there to help provide service, ultimately, to the residents, which we're all here for to serve. So, anything we can do to, to support that you talked about, the other thing you talked about was, I think, a dashboard. If we can have that, every department head should have access to that dashboard first thing in the morning to see what's, what's working, what's, what's not, where the, you know, the, the, the problems are. The, the other, you know, measure, so measurement, the dashboard, very critical. What are you doing, and this is where you get into the organizational health component, what, and maybe you haven't gotten this far yet, and so tell me if, if that's the case. But resident feedback needs to be a part of this, I think, so that we know, are we hitting the mark or are we falling short? Is there any, or did you have any plans for resident feedback in the sort? Thank you.
Through the Chair. Thank you, Councilor Crone. I appreciate that story. I think it's one we've heard before because it is legendary. And I think it helps us think about that culture where everybody's input matters, everybody's efforts matter, and ultimately we're all working towards the same thing. So, thank you for sharing that story. I, on the resident feedback question, so yes, I spoke to the, the engagement strategy. So, the engagement strategy, I think, would be multifaceted. It would be, let's talk to the community and find out how we're doing. Let's maybe engage with a few folks who like to work with us on an ongoing basis, provide feedback, and, and then as well, that ongoing engagement. So, how did we do today? I think we've all experienced different businesses or other municipal services or what have you, where there's a very instant opportunity for feedback. We will see patterns. We'll be able to address them. And then it's an iterative sort of agile process where we learn on the go. And that resident feedback, it's, it's everything to this type of work because we can't do it without them. We can't do it within a silo.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands, so I'll just take a moment to, to add my comments. The performance metrics, to me, are so important. And seeing that coming back to us in an annual report, I know we do an overall annual report, but I think when we spend this amount of time on a strategy, having that followed up with an annual report, a standalone annual report, I think would be very good. So, council can see how you've met the different targets that you've set for yourself. I also think that, that we need to have a general understanding between staff and council of what's a strategy, what's an action plan, that strategies aren't action plans per se, that, that falls out of the strategy. So, I think this is a good starting point, but this is not everything. And you're asking for council's endorsement to say, yes, this is the direction we, we want to go. And I'm hoping that you'll come back to us and show us some of the action plan, even though that's more operational. I think it's still good for council to see that report, not necessarily adopt it or, or approve it, but just to receive it. I think that, that would be very good, just listening to the comments I'm hearing here. Is there anyone else with any comments? Seeing none, Councilor Leahy has put to, the two motions on the floor to receive and to adopt the Service Experience Strategy as the guiding framework for enhancing service delivery in the town of East Gwinbury. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have a second strategy, the IT Strategy, so we can move along to that. General Manager Gandhi, did you want to introduce Rob again?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I mentioned already the IT Strategy that is going to be shared, and I'd like to welcome Rob Halco, Director of IT.
Through you, Madam Chair. Good morning, council. Thank you for your time today. I am excited to present our IT Strategy to you. Now, this strategy will truly revolutionize the IT area at EG, which is something I'm sure you've never heard before. And we'll start by sending AI robots to Mars to colonize it. And that will truly help put EG on the map as a leader in the technology space. So, of course, that's not in our plans. I use this idea to highlight what's at the heart of this strategy. And you can actually find reference to it on Page Five. It's our guiding principles that we've adopted. So, some key items, we want to start where we are. This is the next step in our maturity. We've been on a journey already. For me, this is our next step. We want to progress iteratively with feedback. That's part of why we're here today. But we also, you hear that word iterative, we want to have an agile process. We want to be able to handle threats as they arise. Okay? So, that's part of the design. And number three, we want to keep it simple and practical. You know, a set of processes that are fairly straightforward to follow that lead into an existing process that we have, the business plan. And, you know, that makes it sustainable for us to maintain and improve over time. So, we want this to be practical and sized right for EG. Agile enough for us to make sensible investments, given the pressures in any given year. Next slide, please. So, as you know, we've been on a path to improve our business at EG. Technology's been central to that journey. A couple highlights from a little more recent, we have a new IT Management Dashboard. We've talked about performance metrics. This is something we established kind of as a first step in being able to understand our service levels. You have to be able to measure them to, to be able to hit targets. So, we got something practical in place, and it's a great example of using data to inform our business on an ongoing basis. We developed a cyber incident response plan. You'll hear more about the, the need for that. But it involved setting up a team, and we've even run an exercise where we responded to a mock incident. And we've developed a new EG Connect- And we've developed a new EG Connect Staff Portal, which has really grown staff engagement and allowed us to share information more easily internally. I did also want to note this, you know, the development of this strategy, pardon me, is actually a 2025 Business Plan objective of ours. Some challenges we have, high demand for IT services. That's really a good problem from my perspective. It shows that all staff at the town have bought into digitizing their workflows, and they want to progress with us. So that leads to department ideas for projects. And, you know, we also have our day-to-day support that we run. And the third concept here that is really directly related to the strategy is an IT-led project. How does that look, and how do we determine which IT-led projects will move forward? We want to have a more holistic approach to our capital budget requests. So the way we're doing that is through a new IT Steering Committee. And prioritization, when you have limited resources, this is extremely vital. And we now have a new criteria that's actually part of the strategy, again, practical tools built in the strategy that help us run our projects. Next slide. You know, on the topic of a strategy, this strategy is a set of processes that enables us to progressively elaborate, and it guides our business plan. It was developed by staff to create something that reflects EG and can be carried forward without relying on consultants. So this is our first iteration, and we're setting the foundation. It's, again, using the word iterative, using the word cycle, it's designed into the strategy. And, you know, the why, what's the purpose here? Priorities, performance, collaboration, transparency. You'll see how each of those comes through at different points in the strategy, and I'll get to those in future slides. Next one, please. How does this link to the strategic plan? It isn't an explicit deliverable in it, but technology is important to our quality programs and services objective and municipal excellence. So for quality, we want to have reliable, resilient systems that contribute to staff effectiveness, and we want to have accurate data for making quality decisions. With the culture of municipal excellence, we want to ensure staff have the tools they need, that we improve efficiency on our services, and maintain flexibility for customers. Next slide. So let's get into the approach a little bit. And tried to include enough detail here without getting too down in the weeds. I'll say again, our approach is an agile strategy, so what does that look like? We wanted to use existing processes, our business planning process, to be able to promote the plans. And IT is already a very project-centric area. This is something we've done for years. We run projects, we manage them through our project portfolio management tool, and that's a cycle that we're already familiar with. So when we bring in a strategy, the design is to have that kind of over top of that project layer, to be, take a step back a little and take a look at how things are going, do those assessments, and then help us inform, well, we can't do every project, so what are the ones that we are going to do? So we structured all of our responsibilities into the four areas, people, process, technology, and data. We completed analysis within our IT group. We've now engaged the IT Steering Committee to review proposed projects. That's very fresh, first meeting in May, and now we have another on Monday. And the goal of that is to submit through the business plan and budget. Next slide, please. So I think, you know, so what, Rob? Like, very nice. The analysis is pretty key here, and I wanted to actually include some of it. This is an excerpt. Truly a straightforward SWOT analysis. I think that's easy for people to understand. It's a common tool. It's important, this helps us respond to needs. When I talk about if we're going to respond to threats, they're changing. So it's part of the design of this, to do this yearly. If we had to do it more frequently, could. I think that's sustainable. It's also the way that we're going to show growth over time, like, is this actually having an impact or not? Is the work we're doing related to any of these areas helping us improve? So that's the tool that we have to illustrate that. Little practical example of how it works, you know, IT team cohesiveness and the strength, a big shout out to the team. You know, that's a self-rated strength, so. I, the team we have is able to be honest. I think that's really important. If this was an area under weakness, it'd be the first thing you need to address. Everything that's going to happen, all the good work that happens, starts from a strong team. So I wanted to give a shout out to them. Some examples of where, if you see a weakness, well, how are we going to address that? We've talked a little bit about service level agreements today. It's actually a part of the ITIL framework to create one for your IT service management. It's an, that, in this case, it's an internal document that you can set up as an agreement. We don't have one, so that's a weakness. It will, it would dictate our service levels. Our website, that may be a surprise, it's actually nearing its end of its life. So that's something we're aware about as the administrators of the system. We know that we have to address it. And again, performance metrics, a little bit of a theme today. We have some methods that we track metrics, but they're very manual, and we could do a lot better. So that's an example of where we could improve. And a threat, we don't have too many. I think there was a little bit of caution in calling things that. Obviously, cybersecurity is our number one threat. It's an external force. We have to be right on top of it. It's our number one priority. Next slide, please. So 2025 is a building year. We're setting the foundation of the strategy. We have a mix of existing projects in our portfolio already, and we've actually been able to take action on some quick wins that didn't require further investment. So a handful of projects that were initiated this year already. Again, Steering Committee is a key piece that just started. A new project intake process and evaluation criteria. And, you know, a few highlights, our IT security program, again, covering that threat. It's one of our bigger projects to look at a variety of different areas. It's a very process-driven topic, actually, like, what do we do in an incident? How do we protect it in terms of preventative processes? Our IT communications plan, another weakness that we identified was how do we communicate? How do we help that with change management and how we communicate? And then staff training and certification, making sure our team's built up to be able to do the work that we need to do. Next slide, please. So I come back to the why a little bit to, again, try to connect the how, like, okay, where's the practicality here? So in the case of priorities, we added a framework to actually assess the criteria for priority. We've pinpointed projects that address areas of need in this SWOT analysis. For performance, we have the analysis itself to show improvement over time, but now we also have our IT management dashboard, which covers our project delivery and our support functions. For collaboration, again, use an existing process, the business plan's there, it's the way that we make our requests to you. And again, 2026 will have some, and that will shape over time. And there's an opportunity to actually kind of expand our analysis a little bit in terms of where are we hearing feedback from? So we heard enough internally to make some decisions, but I want that to grow to include more staff and different ways of collecting feedback that can further enhance how we make some of these decisions. And again, transparency, provide regular updates to staff through the Steering Committee, and we have plans for some annual reporting. I know that was mentioned as well. Next slide, and our final slide. So very quickly, how we got here, strategy design, went through a very intentional thought process to be agile. We did our first round of analysis. We developed a little more mature project process to build on top of what we had already, started the Steering Committee. And really, today's a really key moment. So we're in, sorry. It's, this is really a turning point where we're stepping into this new routine. So we're detailing projects in preparation for the 2026 Business Plan with the Steering Committee right now. And I'm really excited for the next analysis at the end of this year, because that's where you start to see it come together. Have we made an impact? Are there new needs to address as they come up for the next round of planning? And, you know, if you look at that yearly cadence, you see annual report, bottom corner, again, with the transparency factor, there is, it's part of the plan, and that's a yearly cadence to say which projects were initiated by the strategy, which category in the strategy did they help, how did the analysis change on it? And that keeps it, kind of ties it all together, really, as we go. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It's a bit of a dry topic, but you got giggles out of us, so congratulations on that. This is here just to be received, so if I can get someone to put that on the table, Counselor Crone, and I'll open it up for questions. Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. It's not a surprise to me that our website is nearing its end of life. I've had multiple feedback from residents that they find it very hard to navigate, they find it very hard to efficiently pinpoint information that they're searching for on our website. And I myself, then they ask me to help out with the information gathering, and I myself tried to search for a certain topic, and I, one time, I came up with 1,000 hits. And then I went to look at other municipalities and found that, for example, the municipality of Stovell, I put in the search bar the keywords I was looking for, and immediately it popped up a document that was relevant, that provided me with some information on that topic. So I think that a lot of work can be done to improve the efficiency and access and usability of the website, and I'm wondering if you have a timeline when those revisions and improvements will be made.
The website is one of our 2026 proposals, and the platform, sorry, through the chair, I apologize. The platform that it's on does shut down in mid-2027. So that's called the iCreate platform. I really appreciate your feedback. That's part of this. I want to hear where there's a struggle, because we should design it into the project in terms of our, what we look to replace it with. So I hope that answered your question, yeah.
Yes, thank you. And I have one more question, if I may. And cybersecurity is obviously a top priority, because we talk about safety, not only from a fire department perspective and emergency services perspective, but also from a protection of sensitive information, whether it's to do with confidentiality or financial details of our residents. It's, you are the front line in terms of protecting that information, and that data is valuable. So my question to you is, will there be opportunities for council members as well as staff to be provided with information? Because I'm a layperson, but I'm well aware that with AI and other technological advances, there are some potentially really challenging situations to deal with in terms of identity, et cetera. And so I, for example, I received an email recently from AMO that they would provide a course on cybersecurity, but at a cost of $350. So rather than spending taxpayer money in my expense fund on $350, I would like to see if it's feasible in the future that all council members be provided with cybersecurity training, and so that we can also be part of the protection and the line of protection for both our residents as well as all of the municipality as a whole.
Thank you, Counselor Leahy. I believe that we have had that training in the past, but perhaps not this term, so the new counselors may want to have some sort of training, and maybe they can do it one-on-one or whatever. Sorry, if you have anything to add to that question?
Through the chair, I think, I appreciate that feedback. I think we'd have to consider how to shape that training and talk about some expectations, and look at what resources we already have that we could share with you.
Yes, thank you. As a follow-up, may I, Madam Chair, just provide maybe a little bit more detail? So as counselors, we are actively engaged on social media, both personally and professionally. And so I think that we're out there in that, navigating that world, that there are many opportunities that we face in terms of potentially exposure. So I know that there are constantly technological developments, and so I would appreciate an updated version of, even if it's just an hour, of procedures and protocols that would be helpful to council members if they wish to have that training. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to just take off on the website comment, because I think that's so important. It's something I hear from residents as well, and have been frustrated trying to get around on the website. So I think that there's probably an opportunity in the next year to speak with council about their experience on the website, what we're hearing from residents about the website in advance of developing the new one, because I think that it's something that's very resident-facing and something that we probably all have interactions with. And I think there's an opportunity there to speak individually with council or by ward to get a little bit of, you know, behind-the-scenes feedback on that before we proceed too far with that. Is there other comments? Counselor Leahy and then Counselor Crone? Sorry, Counselor Roy DeClemente and then Counselor Crone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Halco. We're hearing media reports and through our own sort of networks that artificial intelligence is literally transforming municipal service delivery. There's automated services that are responding to resident requests and so on. What role does AI play in your strategy today?
Through the chair, it's one of our categories that we assessed. The position that we're in right now is a mix of opportunity and a threat, actually, if you think about it. So it came out as opportunity, and I think that's obvious. How can we be more efficient through use of these tools? On the threat side, I look at it like, well, if you don't take advantage of it, how far do you fall behind? And then on the other side of it is, well, how safe is it? Are we implementing it properly? So we have a pilot to explore the tools that are built into the Microsoft platform. We have a few licenses that we've assessed, and we have a draft policy on, you know, how we can guide staff to use it. And that's just the starting point, though. In terms of getting into some business cases, an example might be, how can AI help the website search work better? Things like that. So there's an extremely high ceiling on that, and I do also want us to be cautious in terms of protecting our information all the same. So if I could add, oh, pardon me. If it comes back to me, I'll let you know.
Counselor Crone?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. My, my understanding when talking to cyber experts, it's, it's not a case of if a cyber incident will happen, it's a case of when. And I think everything we can do to, you know, batten down the hatches and make sure that when that incident does happen, it's as minimal as possible. Also an opportunity to review our, our own insurance policies that we have because a lot of them now carry cyber, some form of cyber protection. Not that it stops you from getting breached, but it will help, help pay for some of the efforts to repair the damage done. So I just throw that out as a, as a helpful tip. The, the website, it surprised me that, that it's, it's coming to the end of life. And I appreciate there are, there's been some constructive feedback about the website, but from what you say, it's, it's on a burning platform right now. It's, it's going to expire in 2027. It seems to me like we just updated it a few years ago. What, what is the lifespan of a, of a website these days?
Through the chair, this one's an interesting one because the iCreate platform that we have is actually quite old. But EG implemented it four, five years ago. So in that sense, for EG, it's abrupt. For the whole platform as a whole, it's, it's a little older. And it originated with what was called the eSolutions Group. It kind of became a very common municipal platform that met accessibility standards. And so they won a lot of project awards. And we feel the market may have grown since then, so that there is an opportunity with this as well.
Okay, that's good. If I may, just, I want to throw my support behind increasing any resident feedback that we can get. I think, you know, we, we have a, an email list. I think we should be soliciting feedback there. We have, I think all of us have heard comments about the technology that we have here. Any, I'll stop short of saying that we have a pop-up window on our website asking for feedback, but I think we have to be relentless in asking for feedback. So I would encourage that. But my, my, my big question for you, sir, for you, Madam Chair, is, in your opinion, what will, based on today and then what the future tomorrow looks like, what will be, what will we see different? What's, what's the, the world going to look like when you've, you've been able to do all your magic with IT? And how, how are we going to see it differently, and how will the, the residents see it differently? Thank you.
Through, Madam Chair, I think AI is a big piece of that. I think continued mobility is a piece of that. You know, we, we've, I think laptops have stayed the same size generally, and maybe we're comfortable with it, but do our mobile devices have more capability? Is their compute power has increased as well? So could they be used differently in a practical way? You know, how can we be even more mobile? But the AI is a huge piece, obviously. What, what foundation of data structure do we need to have to kind of get it to a point where there's automatic answers for things? And I think of staff when we're looking for things around SharePoint or, or if the public needs town information. What, how would that look like if it was much quicker, right? And then how, how does that impact your life? So AI is a big part of that, I think.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Councilor Crone to receive the information technology strategy. All in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you very much, and I will turn the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
I've been asked if we'd like to take a break for 35 or 45 minutes and come back for lunch. I'm seeing nods, so with that, we will recess at this point. And I would suggest we're back here at 1:00. Thank you.
Good afternoon. We are now resume the ballots of today's special committee of the whole meeting. We're now at item J. And that is our closed meeting to proceed into a closed meeting of special committee of the whole. And could I have a mover in a second or just a mover count and relay? All those in favor? Be it resolved that the committee proceed into a closed meeting of special committee of the whole council at 1:02 PM to deal with the following matters. Opposition, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried by our, by or on behalf of municipality or local board municipal act section two three nine to K investment attraction opportunity. All those in favor? And that's carried.
Madam Mayor, just bear with us as we transition into a secured meeting.
Madam Mayor, just bear with us as we transition into a secured meeting.
We're back online at this point and we're at the point to rise and report from our closed meeting of special committee of the whole. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Foster? It be resolved that the committee rise and report from the closed meeting of special committee of the whole council at 2:34pm. All those in favor? And that's carried. And an adjournment, Counselor Crone, would you move that please? It be resolved at the meeting of committee of the whole adjournment at 2:35pm. All those in favor? I'm sorry, the mover was Counselor Crone. All those in favor? And that's carried. With that, we are, we have concluded our day today and I'm sure we're all looking forward to a stretch. I'll leave it at that.